Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, September 21st. We have the Brookfield Select Board meeting for today. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see. I see no announcements on the docket for today. Brad, would you read the signed warrants, please?
Yeah, signed warrants. FY-24-06 accounts payable $454,095.82. FY-24-06 payroll $199,349.07. FY-24-64 withholding $70,511.65.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the liquor license manager change for the Brookfield Rod and Gun Club. Is that what you're here for?
That's me.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Why don't you come on up?
Okay.
Uh, just right here. In that chair, please, because that way the...
It's 6:20.
I'm going by... Oh, okay. And we will start the discussion at 6:18 by that clock. I do all my time by that clock, Dave. I think it's a little slower than my watch, but at least that way we're consistent.
Six says 6:20 out here.
Oh, you're saying I have to wait until 6:20?
It's 6:20 now.
Fair enough. Well, no, but I just said I'm going by that.
Hang on, hang on.
You didn't know that?
Let's see what the official...
Mine says 6:20.
Yeah, 6:20.
I know, but I declared the meeting open based on that clock.
That's right.
And so to me, it's a... You're giving me a pass, Dave?
Yes.
Dear diary, today was the most amazing day! I'm glad we can laugh about that. All right. Good for you. It's like, I think this will go a few more minutes, so let's see. Given that it's 19 minutes past, we'll squeak it in. Thank you. Let's see. And so, are you the new manager?
I am.
And who are you, by the way? I'm Tom.
I'm Sharon O'Dick.
Hi, Sharon.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
Are you related to Shelby O'Dea Hill?
She would be my sister.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we have, um, the Brookfield Rod and Gun Club has been managed by Suella Grimes for years.
Mm-hmm.
Years. Um, she has some health issues, and so I agreed reluctantly to assume responsibility for, um, for the bar. It was, paperwork was just filed, um, you know, just sort of a few weeks back, and I've been acting as bar manager for the last few months while she's been recovering, and, um, yes, we're just making it permanent.
Okay. All right. Does anyone in the room have any questions or concerns about the transfer of manager at Brookfield Rod and Gun Club? I do not. Brad, do you have any?
No.
All right. And...
Make a motion to make the change.
To sign... I think we have to make a motion to sign the form?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion to sign the form to, for the manager change to Sharon.
All right. I will second that. All in favor of signing the paperwork to make Sharon the lucky manager of the Rod and Gun Club, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That is true. All right. Okay. Thank you. That was all. We see local... Karen, can you just try to sign this?
This is what you need a majority on a local license.
You got the sign here?
Well, it is down there.
Oh.
Majority on board, you have to sign.
Thank you.
It's rarely a single individual...
Local licensing?
Oh, three. Yeah, it's all three, so I have to be sure of them. Yeah, yeah. It's a majority that needs to sign those licenses for the change.
Ask Karen to make sure we didn't miss anything.
Sure.
All right. The next item is the Central Street Reconciliations.
She is not, she's ill.
Karen, Karen's here. Be that.
Can you please postpone it? Or we can email her. Is that what she said?
Yeah, you can review it and email her with questions or postpone it. It's up to you.
Okay. Let's see. Brad, we've got a light agenda today. Do you want to discuss this, or do you want to just try and get even later and get out of here nicely early?
I'm fine with postponing it.
All right.
Nothing's going to change.
I'm good with that also, so, all right, then, let's defer this. Karen, can you put this on the agenda for the October 5th meeting?
I will.
Thank you. All right. Next up, the Timeline Apple Country Radio Transmitter Studio Relocation. Sharon, that is you.
Mm-hmm. Do you allow the rich to bet this year for them?
Uh, I'm not...
We're not sure.
Where I am is that Beth's not sure she's going to get off her call, and so we will move forward as it is.
Can you have in front of you...
Hold on, hold on, please.
I'm sorry?
Wait one moment.
We hear someone in the hallway. So, Beth may be arriving.
Cool.
Probably not.
Maybe not.
Yep. All right. Well, they're not coming into the room, so let's resume.
Okay. You have in front of you my latest fall memo with the timeline that was requested about what needs to happen when. It's on the back of the memo. And this represents a timeline for things that would affect these spaces here. There is other things I have to do with the FCC, other things I have to do with equipment and software and things like that that don't affect this building or GAVIT. So, I've left these off. This is just basically an outline of what has to happen. I've also given you a, um, some visual aids about the current setup of the antenna at GAVIT, how it's wired in, what it looks like, how it's put into the building. The situation can be very similar to what I proposed here with the advice of some people on the Time Line Improvement Committee and also in consultation with my engineer. So, there's a picture. The first page is showing the way it's set up now with the antenna at the peak of the block side of the building, the warehouse. And then going through the eaves, coming out over the driveway, and then attached to the office, the former office building, and then from that's to the room where the transmitter is. And if you turn the page, there's a picture of the actual antenna and mount.
Okay.
And it shows it coming into the building at the peak in what used to be the nurses' office at GAVIT. They had to fortify the connection because that wall, if they had not, a good strong wind would have pulled the antenna right off the wall and part of the wall with it. So, they reinforced the wall from ink from the inside, and then they mounted the antenna, ran that cable, which is a half inch in diameter, through the upper level of the building, into the eaves, and then out. On page four, there's a relatively fancy grommet and protectable for building and the cable at the bottom of that page. That's where the cable exits the building. It goes across the driveway, and then it goes into the office building on page five. It's attached to the outside of the building, and then they loop excess around so that in case the cable expands and contracts, it will not damage the building.
Mm-hmm.
And then, if you turn the page again, it shows the grommet on the inside of the building with the cable coming in, and then the picture at the bottom shows the back of the transmitter and where the cable connects to it. And that transmitter is the size of a bread box, quite literally. It's two rackets high. It's, I think, 10 inches wide, 10 inches deep, and 19 inches wide.
That would be a standard rack size.
Yeah. And the blue below it is the Sage Digital Endex. That is the box that transmits the FCC-required Emergency Alert System. You've probably heard that if you listen to the radio for any length of time. This box will put it in automatically. You can also program it within a certain 15-minute interval if you want to not interrupt the program. If you don't do that, it will break into the programming and make the announcement.
Mm-hmm.
And I put the brief specs about the transmitter, the model, the wattage, what the, what happens with the signal degradation over the coax cable, and what the effective radiated signal is, 100 watts. And below the blue box, as we call it, are the two required radio receivers, because those are the receivers where we get the emergency alert system from. And that is transmitted into the endex. And then finally, as far as the photographs, so it's a picture of the current clock tower showing the two antennas that are already on there. And as you can see on the bottom picture, the mount on the, what we call a dipole antenna, the one that looks like a coat hanger, is very similar to the mount that we would be using on our antenna.
Okay. And the pictures are from different sides?
That's correct.
Okay.
One is from the driveway side and the sunny one, and the one, the other one is from the roof side.
Mm-hmm. And where do you, do you know where, where on the tower it would be mounted?
Well, as far as getting a bucket truck up there would be easier, it would be obviously decided from the driveway, but I would have to confer with Chief Martell's tech guy, just in case.
Mm-hmm.
And it would probably be mounted in the same fashion, at the same level, with a mast going up from there. And the next page is what we call a cut sheet, and it's basically a technical sheet showing the antenna and all the specs for it. And it's a Schottley Model 681-2B. It's made especially for low power stations. It's very lightweight, but it does the job.
Mm-hmm.
And it's circularly polarized, which means the signal is sent out both horizontally and vertically, unlike a dipole antenna, which is just a vertical signal. And this way, it can go around buildings and around cars and through trees and so So, that's the information I wanted to provide in case there were any questions about that. I'm not good at remembering technical stuff, so I figured if you had it in hand, that would be better.
Mm-hmm.
So, what I'm asking is for a preliminary letter of approval so that I can have something to show people, like at the FCC, that we're finding a place for the studio, and that I can start working on this cut list for the move from GAVIT in time for December 30th.
Okay. And then, let's see. In your letter, it's, on the second page, there's items 1 through 9.
That's correct.
Which looks like a punch list. And one thing that I would like from you is timeline for things that you would be coordinating with the town. Like, for example, the, like, when do we need the lease by? When, and then, I don't know what, and I'm not sure. It's like, just looking through here, like, both upper rooms wired and internet nodes installed, so I expect you to be taking care of most of that, but do you need anything from the town other than authorization to run the wiring?
Well, underneath that list, it says, just reading from it, "Some of the above can be accomplished simultaneously." Working out with the FCC, the details with Chief Martell. But the linchpin to vacate in the GAVIT facility by December 31st is the lease. I can't begin any of those other steps without it.
No, I understand.
So, that's how that works. So, I think what she's saying, if I may interject, is that she can't give you dates because she doesn't know when she's getting the lease. And once she has it, then she can give you dates to fill in this list. So, it's on us to find out when we're getting the lease.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I was, um, I thought maybe that she would say, if we sign lease on this date, this is how it would work out in a preliminary schedule.
The date I'm looking for is ASAP, basically. Because we're going into October, three months, and I started this process with the board the beginning of this year, and this is how long it's taken just to get to this point. And I know the wheels of government are in small, but I'm hoping that once I get the lease, the rest will come across very quickly, because I won't be asking the board to, for example, paint the walls. I'll be doing a lot of this work myself as volunteers. But I need the lease first before I can plan the rest, because I may have to adjust it if I get it later rather than sooner.
Hmm.
Can I just have a question about that? So, when it comes to like the improvements, the wiring, the electrical, the painting of the walls, whose oversight is that? Is that Town Hall Improvement Committee then? Or the Select Board?
Explain to me what you mean by oversight. She's volunteering to do all of the...
No, I know. But I mean, making sure, like, you know, the electrical stuff is...
So, our electrical inspector is the one doing the work?
Okay. All right.
With his team from the school. So, that is not something that we would be necessarily overly concerned with, because I think Beth brought that up at a previous meeting, that because it's our electrical inspector that teaches and knows the code, that we wouldn't be overly concerned with the installation of anything electrical in that area. And other than that, it's cosmetic. It's painting and everything. There is, there is a matter of putting internet nodes in, and I would work that out later with the town. You know, the other thing that would have to be arranged for is, I would have to ask Scott how the electricity, if it's plugged into the building and it's on the building's meter, what I would do to reverse the town for any additional cost. You know, it's not a lot of equipment. That could be part of the lease agreement. That's exactly what I'm getting at, yeah. Right now, I'm paying for electricity at GAVIT, and I, that's on a separate meter. So, they know exactly what power I'm drawing, and it comes to between $190 and $150 a month. It's not a lot of, and that's because we have electric heaters in the building, because there's no heat in that building. So, we're not going to have heaters in that room. It's just going to be the electricity for the equipment. But the truth, the true endpoints, as it were, is I need the lease so I have an assurance that I'm going to be allowed to do this, and then I have to get stuff out of GAVIT, because they want the building vacated by the end of the year. And if I don't have the, if I don't have the room upstairs available, I'll have no place to put that equipment, so even just to store it for the time being until I get the renovations done. And to answer your other question, I hope to do that with the crew volunteers, some of which I'm in the process of recruiting now. There's not a lot that needs to happen with that room outside of the wiring. I mean, it's in pretty good shape considering the work we would have had to do at GAVIT. A building with no heat, it had no exit in the engine, you know, exit signs, it had no emergency lighting. The walls were dark and hadn't seen paint in 20 years. The run needed, I mean, there was a ton of stuff that needed to be done with that space. That room upstairs is relatively pristine compared to that.
Okay. All right. So, Kelly, at our last meeting, the board has already authorized the signing of this letter to Sharon.
Correct.
Okay, so I can sign that right now?
Yeah.
Because there is, we've already authorized that action. So...
Just one more, one more bit of information. The removal of the antenna off of GAVIT and the installation here is going to be done by a group called Industrial Communications. They are, they do towers. That's how, you know, how, the type of work they do. So, this is, you know, this is like one day's work we're talking about. So, are we looking for two leases, one for the antenna and one for the room? Or is it combined?
GAVIT has one lease for both.
Well, that would be what I would suggest. I was doing some research today and the suggestion...
I would almost think about breaking it into two, only because if at some point you ever decide to move, you can maintain...
That's a really good point.
Yeah, I was thinking that also, that maintaining two separate leases gives everyone the flexibility, because the thought is, the studio may want to move somewhere else. The transmitter's a lot more work to move, because you have to do the R F engineering.
That's a good place to have it for the town.
Yeah, and the transmitter, by the way, would not be in the room directly above that, it would be in the room above that. That little teeny room that's with the short flight of stairs going from the stage right room.
So, if, so the studio will occupy stage right room, the transmitter will be upstairs from stage right.
That's correct.
So, that if the transmitter, if the studio were to relocate somewhere else, the stage right room would be available for other things, and the transmitter would still be happy in its location.
That's exactly right. And all I have to do is put a lock on that door upstairs.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
So, in my, in my research today, I was speaking with a town administrator from Weston, and they actually have leases for multiple facilities that the town owns. And what they do when there's an emergency or there's something highly legally technical is they do a license to bridge the gap. So, we can do a license immediately and then work out the terms of the lease to bridge that time span, if that's something the board is inclined to do. And KP is the one who developed the license to bridge this gap for leasing.
What is the distinction between a license and a lease? Just the timeframe? Or...
So...
Giving her the right, essentially.
Yeah. It basically, it is a short-term permission to do something, whereas a lease is more a long-term.
Mm-hmm. I mean, if it were a short-term lease, I think it would be called that.
No. The lease can't be for a month, but a license can be for a month.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Okay.
Lease has to be for a minimum of six months.
Really?
And so, if we're going to do a three-year lease, which is what was discussed at the previous meeting, but she needs it now, and we don't have the terms defined at this point because we need more technical assistance, then a license could bridge that gap and give her the ability to do what she needs to do. In addition, it will give me time to work with the town and find out what they need for a lease, and get that information to them.
Okay. That seems like, that seems like a prudent way to go. That way, we can make sure the lease is structured properly and isn't missing anything and doesn't have terms that we don't need, or it might, I mean, everyone might find over us later on. A short-term lease. Okay. All right. Before I forget, Karen?
Yes.
Do you need a copy of this signed letter before Sharon gets it?
I'm going to the...
All right.
Now?
Bang. So, all right, so you've got it. I've signed it, and Karen will deliver it to you shortly.
Okay. And one of the things I intend to do is to keep this body, a price of every step I take that affects the property, so that you won't wonder what... What is that? What are we going to be undoing tonight? We're going to put something as minor as, say, clean before.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
That way, if you want to pitch an in-house, you're like...
I knew you had an angle to that.
Always.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. So, Kelly, so we're going to have to decide how we want to handle the negotiation of the licensed handlers? Whether we're going to appoint someone on here or appoint someone else to handle it?
This is, this is very dismembering. This is more of a procurement issue. You're agreeing to, you need to agree to a cost, basically.
So, do you want to handle it?
And the terms. Sure.
All right.
I will bring you the information with me to decide. Basically, I'm looking for similar situations with, in particular, leases with low power. Just the typical terms are, and the process to get this done in a quick way.
Yes. In a way that reflects the general practices across the state.
No, in a way that reflects the law.
Well, hopefully, well, I guess I presume the general practice is conformed to the law, but...
That's a great, that is a great assumption. I'm going to run with that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Kelly...
So, yes, so, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
Because the last meeting was the one where you said you could use the rules.
All right. So, do you need a vote from us authorizing the negotiation, or is that...
Yes, please.
All right. Brad? So, moved...
Motion to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a license and lease and return on behalf of the board.
It's like, you have to fire an engineering warrant of specifics, because the FCC wants exactly that to negotiate a license.
I didn't... That's what I was... All right. I will second the motion. Any discussion, Brad?
No.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Dawn, I think you had your hand up. Did you, did we cover what you...
No, I just asked Sharon a question about the location of the antenna.
Okay. Good.
I was hoping it was a little bit higher. She said it's slightly...
It's up to the FCC, actually. We did get a response from the fire chief saying that he is very informed in working with Sharon this whole time, and he has no issue with the...
Yeah, yes. Sharon did share Peter's email to her to that fact, so I had seen that.
I wasn't sure. Glad you got it.
Sharon, thank you for sending that, supporting that response from Peter.
Like I said, it's communication.
So, yes. No, it's just good to know.
Mr. Sharon, may I ask a few questions here so the townspeople know what's actually going on here?
Um...
That's possible.
Specifically about the Apple Country Radio?
Yes. If I may, yes.
Let's see. I mean, other than the...
It's quite convincing that the townspeople should be letting them know what they're going to be paying for.
What they're going to be, you mean, what's, well, there's, that hasn't been decided, Mr. Holcraft, because the lease and the license haven't been agreed to yet. We have, we have an agreement in principle. We have issued a letter to Apple Country Radio indicating our willingness to lease space in this building, and we have authorized the town administrator to negotiate the particulars of this. But until the particulars are decided, there is no, there is no agreement to say who's going to be paying for what.
What about heat? We're not, we're not, we're not heating that room up there right now.
We are.
Not the big room, we're not. Why would we be heating that room? Not yet.
Um, well, excuse me, Kelly, Mr. Holcraft, if there is, if there is heat, we can, if there is heat, it's already up there. If there is no heat, then that can be addressed through the license and the lease, where we can make sure that if they say, we can say, "No electric heaters," and that way we can, and that way we can ensure that they're not using electric power for that. I'm certainly not expecting them to use, you know, C heaters up there or anything like that. I understand your concern, but I think the appropriate time for these concerns is when we have an actual contract in front, so that we can understand what's at issue, what's not. Otherwise, it's all hypotheticals. Like you're saying, what about heat? What about electricity? And so, we understand about electricity, and I think the options there are to either arrange for them to have their own meter, or to up the rent on the lease to ensure that it covers the expected electricity cost. And we can work with them to make sure they're on a breaker that doesn't make them get way more than what we're expecting them to get in the agreement. I think they have a good handle on what power they need.
So, the townspeople spending any money on this room at all? There's not going to be anything else going on? I heard, I heard there's going to be money used from some, some grant or something. Yeah, I forget the name of it.
I believe that we are, we have authorized money for improvement of the, what's that room upstairs? The ballroom or what else? The ballroom or what else?
Yeah, but we're eating the ballroom, but not that area.
No, I, I know, but my, my point is that it's like-
Yeah, that's what I want to know. What's that, what's that?
My-
That's the arbor room.
Yeah, the arbor room. No, that's not going to be used in that room, is it?
No, nothing, nothing beyond the doors. It's just in the actual wall. And it's the walls and the ceiling and the ballroom, and the balcony, and behind the stage.
Okay, one is, right, okay. What about the insurance company about the antenna in that clock tower? I mean, that's, I think that should be addressed.
It will be in the lease.
Would be too late if you don't get the lease made up at the time.
No, no, that's part of, that's part of writing the lease.
Is understanding these-
That they have to hold a certain amount of insurance to indemnify the town.
So you got that base covered?
Yes.
How about having a, a nonprofit organization?
Hold on, hold on. Let's save this discussion for when there's a lease to review. Offline, offline, out of this meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you, Dave, about your concerns, and we can make sure that they are shared with Kelly so that, I, I expect not people to slip by her. I understand your concern, but I think this room right now, this, is, this is not the right venue for your concern. I don't want to shut you down.
No, 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 I just, yeah, I want to make sure to cut ahead of time before you have a final lease in front of you.
Okay, and that's, and so, let's, let's talk about it after the meeting. And that way, if you have any concerns, I, we can make sure that they're on Kelly's radar, and she can make sure that the lease reflects them, or she can tell us why, she, she, she can share with us why she thinks it's not, it's not something we need to, to handle through the lease. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
I think so.
Good.
As long as it's a discussion before something's fine with the installment.
Hmm. We will be, um, we will be reviewing, the select board will be reviewing and discussing the lease at a future meeting, because we have to have it on the agenda in order to sign it. And at that point, really, the lease will be a public document, it will be available for people to review, and at that point, if you do have specific concerns, um, that would be, uh, your final opportunity to bring them up. Alright, lovely reports carrying on. Uh, let's see. I'm thinking that this is, this is something where I wanted to come up with a, uh, guidelines for when we wanted our departments to submit their monthly reports. I know that after I had this brilliant idea, I found that the Chief Blanchard is at the mercy of when he gets reports from dispatch in New Braintree. So it's not practical to hold him to a schedule when he has, um, no control over some of his source information. Uh, at the moment, the Highway Department is down two people, and so, and I would like him to focus on, it's like, I don't want to overly distract him from getting stuff done. Um, so, and, uh, Peter? Since, since you're here? It's like, I'll, I'll, I'll take advantage, we were, the discussion was just saying, it's like, um, for the Fire Department, um, the monthly reports, is there a timeframe in which you, you feel comfortable committing in saying, for the bogus report, I could get it due by the 20th of, or for any month, I get it due by the 20th of the following month? Is, and if you want to think about it, that's fine, because I'm popping it, I have to.
I mean, honestly, if, if I've got a deadline or a target, that actually makes it easier because it comes off of an eventuality thing to, I can get this done.
Hey, hey, in case you will focus. And, and that's, and that's one of the reasons I thought to, to, to discuss this was to say, if we gave the department, say, a, we'd liken it by this time, it would give them the focus to get it done. So, alright, so my, my ask to you is if you could have it done to us, could you have it done for us in time for our second meeting of the month, which is the third Thursday? So it would be the 15th to the 21st.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, and then for, and I think for-
Would this be for Fire and EMS or just Fire?
Uh, let's see.
I don't know if the date is, is readily available.
Yes, uh, well, I would say, Peter? That would be for Fire. Um, do you think that, do you, do you think Donna could meet that same schedule? Would you, would you want her to speak first?
I can let her know that that's, it'd be a similar thing, that, yeah, if we're giving a deadline, it just moves it up on the radar, probably we'll get to it too, we'll get it done.
Okay, then, uh, why don't we ask, why don't we communicate that to Donna in the sense of, um, that this is what we'd like if it's, if it's difficult for you, or you, or you foresee trouble, let's talk about it. And that way, it's like, I don't want it to come down, I don't want her to see it as a mandate since she hasn't had a chance to comment on it.
Okay.
Alright. And then for Ryan, it's like, I just got a, I want to set up a schedule with him, but I think right now, it's a, with his shorthandedness, it's going to be tough for him. But maybe we need to get that done just so we can see how much work he's doing and how much-
You understand that Lindsay does these reports, right?
You're right, she, alright, then. Thank you for the reminder.
I mean, they are very shorthanded, but I think, I think Lindsay is still, is managing very well with the administrative end.
Then let's, uh-
I don't know, what she needs is the sources of, from Ryan, so that's just something to keep.
Yeah, she, it's like, she's not shorthanded, but she might have trouble getting necessary information out of Ryan.
Perhaps.
It's, right.
And I don't know how that can work with that office.
So for Ryan, why don't, for Highway, why don't we ask for the, in time for the third Thursday of the month also? So that we could then expect to review the Fire EMS and Highway reports at that meeting. And we can ask, we can ask Lindsay if that's something, we can ask Lindsay if that's something she thinks that she and Ryan could produce, or actually we'll ask, should we ask Ryan or Lindsay? I'm trying to think. Ryan's department, I should ask Ryan. I get to the right answer eventually, with a little help. Alright, um- Brad, any, any thoughts? I'm doing all the talking, because it's kind of my issue. Alright, um, I think we, I think we need a motion to, um, to ask for the department heads for this? Do we need a motion, or is that just something we can?
You, you, it would, it's always better to have a motion.
Alright.
Do a motion.
So make a motion to have Fire EMS, Police, and-
Not Police, because it's at the mercy of the-
Fire EMS and Highway to have their monthly reports to us by the third Thursday of the month?
Are they the only departments that do monthly reports? Do we get one from Cemetery or Water? I think Water provides one to the Water Commissioners. Correct?
We do. We have a monthly meeting. We do not necessarily do a central report.
Okay, I didn't know, that's why I'm asking.
I don't think I've ever seen a water report come past this board.
Yeah, well, they have a commission, so-
Yeah, and, and so it makes sense that, that they're, that Dennis' reports would go to his commissioners.
We get a, we get a monthly briefing and update from the superintendent as to the operations.
Hmm.
We don't, we don't ask him to file a report.
Well, yeah, if he had a monthly briefing, that's good enough, I think. Yeah. Whereas, rather than ask the department heads to come in, we ask them to report. Okay. So, did you make the motion, Brad, or?
Yes.
You made the motion, so Fire EMS and Highway, ask them to provide the report by the 21st of, and that's, uh, let's see. Alright, I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And, um, Karen, will you communicate that? Um, let them know that if they do feel that it's a problem, to let us know. And I, I would also say that if they feel they're not going to make it in a month, if they could, um, let us know that they're not going to make it and when they expect to get it. That way, if they can't do it, at least they say, I'm going to have it done on this date.
Okay.
And we'll see how that works. Alright, uh, signed state primary warrant? Is that under the vote tabulator over there?
Then it's under the vote, well, that's the box that holds the vote tabulator. I believe the brain is locked up somewhere else safer.
Okay. Well, I saw the locks on the case covers, so I thought maybe the brain-
It might be contained within, but the brain might be in there.
Alright.
They were doing a training on it, 'cause all three you have to sign.
Alright, well, that's not here, so can we just be the two of us?
Yeah, but I mean, all, all three pages.
Okay, but, okay. Oh, oh, they're three pages, got it.
Yeah, there's three originals, I mean, three originals, right.
Alright, so this is the warrant for the primary election on October 10th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM here at Town Hall. Um, I believe the only matter on there is the primary for the, um, the State Senate for Ann, the seat vacated by Ann Goby. Uh, let's see, so Brad, could I get, could I get a motion to sign this?
Make a motion to sign the, uh, State Senator primary warrant.
Alright, I will second that. All in favor? Alright. Alright, uh, next up, resignation Caitlin Servant from the Advisory Committee. Uh, let's see. She's in Florida, lucky her, or she's on her way, I should say. Uh, so I would, uh, accept, we, do we need to vote, or can I just accept her resignation?
No, you don't need to vote, because she doesn't actually need permission to quit, so.
That's, okay, that's what I'm going to do.
You can accept it with regrets and thank her for her service, because she did a great job. She worked very, very hard, I think, by serving.
I, I worked with her her entire term there, so we, uh, we do accept it with regret, and we thank her for her service. And let's see, uh, next, approved select board minutes from 6:14, 19, and 9:07, 23. Uh, let's see, so for 6:14, 19, Karen, those were emailed earlier today? Yeah, I reviewed those.
Did you review the corrected version?
I reviewed one version that was sent.
No, that's the old one he's talking about, but the new one, yes, I gave, I gave them all copies right now, and I also sent it, he, I never sent him, I sent it to you first, so they never saw my whole document. They only saw the corrected one.
Okay.
Oh.
Wait, wait, well, well, right, right now, we're talking about the, I'm, I'm talking, right now, I'm focusing on 6:14, 19.
Right.
Were there any corrections to those minutes?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No corrections.
Okay.
And that's what those were all.
Alright, um, Brad, do you?
I was trying to figure out if it was wrong. I don't know, I sent you the 9:07. Did I send you the 9:10?
You sent me something 5:18 or something.
Yeah, those have been, but it hasn't been updated.
Alright, I'll get it next time.
Okay.
So Brad, can I get a motion for the 6:14, 20, 19 minutes?
Uh, make a motion to approve the 6:14, 19 minutes.
Alright, uh, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then for the, um, for the 9:07, 23, the corrected ones are the ones with the 9:09 date on top? September 9th?
Yeah.
Alright. So, alright. Brad, any, uh-
Uh, the date, we need to correct.
No, it's just the date, correct?
Yes.
So I'll take a motion, if, if, I read the minutes, I don't have any issues, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes with the corrected, with a, with the date corrected, so move. Alright, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. And we've got the leased property report. Have you seen this, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't get a chance to look at it, it's, uh- Alright, uh, let's see. Date motion to accept the report.